Why don't you get in the middle?
In the middle?
Yep.
Move over that way.
Just take over, please.
I will.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know what I'm doing.
Select board want to move it?
No.
I was gonna make you wear a tie.
Big guys can't.
If we take a step forward.
Big eyes in the front.
Yep.
You guys stand together. I'll stand over here. Julie.
Thank you.
Come over here at that light. Yep, come over here, big boy.
What do you want us?
As long as you can be in there and in between. Want to move over where Katie is?
Okay, you have the right idea.
I should take charge.
Katie, you're all good.
You're sure?
I'm good.
While I have all the select board up here, I need a picture of you.
Do you want me to take one?
What?
Yeah.
Well, with them. That crew.
Did you get out a traffic book and you can take?
Katie, you guys stay up there, we're taking a picture of all of you. Everybody take one step this way. Good job.
Is it right?
Thank you. Perfect. I didn't do my hair.
That was her, thank you. Oh geez, Katie, I didn't see that or I would've.
I'm not an invalid. John Lash's little girl. She was a toddler, used to be at the soccer game. He's adorable. She, what a funny little thing she is. She's so full of it, she's so cute. I see she hasn't changed. Don't pop anything.
Okay, I guess we'll resume the meeting. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. And I note that there's just one small error in 9.1. The minutes need a slight correction. Item 1.1.4. I think we voted.
You.
Sorry?
Voted for you.
I think we did.
Yes, we did.
The vice chair.
So should it be a point?
Yeah, I noticed that they were.
Robert Butler as?
Two people with the same thing.
Vice chair, not chair. You can't have two chairs.
Correct.
So it's vice chair of the Board of Assessors.
I actually think that was corrected. Clint printed above, pointed that out to me.
Right.
In an email.
Okay, good.
But I don't think when, I will admit this was my packet. I don't think I used the corrected version. So that's probably my fault. No, it is my fault, not probably. It actually is.
And on the last page?
Yes.
Shows Jan is vice chair.
Here.
Yes, we changed that too. Yeah, I just, I printed out the old one, I'm sorry.
You didn't read your packet, did you?
Yes, I did. Oh, here. Okay, okay.
Anyway, I'll move approval of the consent calendar with changes.
One second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All set? Thank you. Full business. Transfer Station Management Board Discussion. I'd ask that this be put on the agenda. We did pass a new ordinance in June. And calls for the creation of a management board. Composed of selectmen from each of the three towns that operate, or help operate, the transfer station. That was Friendship, Cushing, and Waldaburl. And I was hoping that we could move ahead with that. I think our town manager is the one who pushes the ball on this one. By ordinance, I think you're supposed to get the committee together, at least to have a first meeting.
Correct.
And then to figure out how things move on from there.
Correct.
And I would hope that we could do that in the next, well, before the next select board meeting.
That's awful quick, but I will try to do that.
That would be great. If I could have a motion to that effect, that would be.
Well, can we just maybe say in August?
All right. I'm impatient.
Well, I understand you're impatient. But there's a lot of moving parts to this. And if I could just have that little bit of breathing room, that would be great.
Okay, so by the end of August?
Right.
All right.
If I could just have it. I'll have it in August. But I just think that if we could have a little bit more time, and there's people who are going to be on vacation too, and I want to make sure that we are. And it's also John's busiest, the next two weeks. John Degel is going to be insanely busy. And we're working double tides this, coming this week with the Pine Street landing project. So night's going to be a little rough for him.
All right, thank you.
I make a motion to move the Transfer Station Management Board Discussion by the end of August for discussion.
The second meeting?
Well, no, that, I will have a meeting.
She will have a meeting with the three towns.
I'll have a meeting with the three towns, right.
With the three towns by the end of the month.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, second?
One second.
Thanks. Any further discussion?
So who's, who are we gonna put on these boards?
Well, this is a representative.
How can you have a meeting without having?
It's actually by ordinance, who's on the board, on the management board. The management board does have the authority to appoint a transfer station committee. And at that point, if they decide they want to have one, they would ask for applicants to express an interest. Each town would.
A selectman from each, a selectman from each town. Myself, John Degel.
Yep.
When are we gonna make that selection for us?
Well, that's.
I think, it's already says that there's the chairman of this board who's on that committee, on that board, on the management board. I'll double check that. But I'm pretty sure that's what it says.
That's what it says.
Yeah. So I think we're set in that regard. We don't know who's gonna show up from Cushing or Friendship yet.
Yeah, I get, I understand that.
Yeah.
I just, I want to get our, our end fixed, so we knew where we were.
Yep, oh, thank you. I think we're ready to go on that.
Does that mean you're on the management board?
Yes, yes.
And then, and then that management board will, if they choose to, create a committee made up of?
Right, and the condition is that there be enough volunteers to have a, have a committee. I think there will be. There's been a lot of interest expressed, especially from the other two towns. They've been very active in that committee. So hopefully we'll have enough for the reconstituted transfer station committee. All right, I guess we need to have a vote. The motion was made and seconded?
It was.
All in favor? Thank you. And Friendship School, Friendship Street School lease agreement?
This is a, the lease between the school and the town for Friendship Street School. This is for Midcoast Maine Community Action. It just outlines how the payments are made.
And it's about $3,000 for the first, what, nine months?
Ten, nine months.
And $7.50 a month after that?
Correct. $29,250.
I would move that.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. New business. Comprehensive Plan Committee Discussion and Recreational Trail Program.
We happen to have this evening gracing our presence, the Bill Napower and the Max Johnstone from the planning office. I didn't want them to think that they were, you know, not the, like Johnny Degel.
Please. We sent out a memo for this, an appointment of, particularly a land use committee. This would be the new committee that we would need to begin the implementation of the plan. Before I speak about that, we have an economic development committee that's already beginning its work. You're appointing the rep committee that's starting. And also a conservation commission that has tasks to do. But the land use committee is basically kind of an ad hoc committee. It's gonna sunset in about a year or so. Their job would be to take the recommendations in the comp plan dealing specifically with the land use ordinance and incorporate that into, into the ordinance, which will involve some revision, probably some reordering of things. Hopefully, with your fingers crossed, it would take about a year to do on that. We recommended, we, just for your consideration, kind of a recommendation for who would staff the committee so it's representative of some of the expertise we have on existing committees. And it would also include four to six members, you know, of the public. So Planning Board, Board of Appeals, Conservation Commission, Shellfish Committee, because there's a lot of water quality issues that we're dealing with. Economic Development. It's good to have one select board member on that committee. So we're gonna ask one of you to volunteer for that. And then again, four to six members of the public. So we have a diverse. So like the Recreation Committee, we're gonna ask for you to consider soliciting membership. And then when we get a group of people, you know, members, a sufficient number to, for you to consider those people for appointment and then form the committee. And then Max and I will take over the staffing responsibility. And, you know, we'll work with that committee to start their task on that. Hopefully, if we can get, I know it's always difficult to get volunteers, but I know there's some people that have already volunteered already. So if we could possibly, you know, try to get this committee up and running, at least by sometime in September, that would give us a good start to, you know, get, hit the ground running in, in the fall and then the winter. This is interesting work, but it can be rather tedious. So I like to keep it moving and people enthused. Jan, you know from the comp plan committee that you were there for a number of years. And we don't want to overtax and burn out people, you know, so that. So if we can keep this, you know, as interesting and as efficient as possible, we'll, I think, be able to maintain a good group of people. We're recommending between 12 and 14, somewhere around that there. We usually pick that number because we know, you know, over the course of that year, we'll probably lose a member here and two for, you know, other conflicts or something like that. So that's a good number, possibly.
So we'll put the announcement out on the website.
Yes.
And Facebook and all of those things.
Yeah, good.
And then we do have a committee that interviews.
That's great.
A subcommittee of the select board. So then they'll interview and then they'll make recommendations to the board. And the board will appoint probably at the end of August.
Great, that would be great. I know there's a couple of people that I've been saying, geez, if you're interested, go and sign up.
We have some application. I think we have like, I'm gonna say like four or five already.
Oh, great, oh, great. That's great news. Great news. All right, good. That's all we have to say. Max, do you have anything?
I had a question from a person in town who is a property owner, but is not a red, not a resident, I guess is a resident out of state, but owns property here. And he was wondering if he can put in, if he could put in to be on the committee.
My understanding is you actually have, your legal residence has to be the town of Waldaburl to serve on a board or a committee.
All our meetings are open, too.
Right, they can come.
Okay, I just, he asked me to ask the question, so.
If someone comes, we'll put them to work, I guarantee you for that. Are there any other questions here? Thank you very much for your consideration.
And now we just need Max for the recreational trail portion. And I just want to say, this is Max, he's been with us now almost a year.
It's been a year.
It's been a year.
Since the 17th, I think.
The 17th. And.
You wanted that, no.
What was that?
You wanted that, no.
You did. He's been here a year. It's been, I think, this is one of my best decisions since I've been in Waldaburl, was, was Bill and Max. And it's, it's a great fit for the town. We increased the number of hours that somebody is here. And the expertise has been fabulous. And Max is a great addition. I love his humor. It's very dry. Sometimes he doesn't know what some of us are talking about, 'cause, you know, Rin Tin Tin. He wasn't sure, quite sure what Rin Tin Tin was, but we figured it out.
Yes, and I'll quickly just start by saying, I really have appreciated this opportunity I've got. As someone who just graduated university, I was scared to find a job. And thank goodness you guys came along. So with that being said, please don't fire me. Right, so the recreational trail program. It's a grant that's offered, that the state of Maine offers to, well, as the name would imply, trail development in Maine. They primarily split into three different categories. Motorized, non-motorized, and then a hybrid of the two. I think you got the memo that I sent out. I've been looking through this since last September, when I, well, missed the deadline for last year. And looking at the contents and sort of areas in town we could do. There were three possible spots, or options that I have before you, that I just looked at now. The first option is using the funds for Quarry Hill. The starting plan I had was just two parking lots, one right next to the quarry and then one closer to the blueberry fields up the road. The reason I, and then signs and other sort of safety precautions around the quarry itself. Reason for that is to make it a more accessible trail, I'd say. Right now, there's only that little area at the quarry to park. And I think it takes two. I went up with two members of the conservation commission and we were already kind of boxed in and double parking. And the reason I, so that's for one parking lot right next to the quarry. And then one up closer to the blueberry fields is because long-term plan to turn the snowmobile trail that currently exists into a year-round trail. And to have that, I think, would allow sort of an easier entrance for people in town. Again, that's just long-term. Can get into that later. That's the first option. Second option, I believe, was a bridge over at the rest stop near Hannaford. This is something that I've heard so many people say they wanted, including Julie. The problem that might arise from that is that Elm, Elm Street does not go all the way to where the bridge would connect. So we would need an easement from one of the two property owners, or both, if they're very generous. And that probably would mean we're not able to do it this year. However, I left that one and the third option in because this works on a point system. And one of the things they take into account is how often a town applies for these grants. So it's just, so that's why I'm leaving the two options in there. And I didn't realize the easement part until very recently and how long it would take. And then the third option was something that our rec director, Marcus, brought up. There was an idea for a trail near the Miller Ball fields. And so that's a third option that I just mentioned in there. And I can talk more if that's what the select board wants to go for.
One of the other things that came up with Quarry Hill recently is that we'd like the recreation, the newly formed recreation committee to get into is also exploring legitimizing, not providing any lifeguards, but legitimizing potentially, that we have a lot of requests to legitimize Quarry Hill as a swimming hole. So.
And that's actually one of the things that I think I mentioned in there. The signs, one option can, if you're choosing to stay the course, the signs can say, no swimming. But if you want to go the other course of legitimizing it, then it can say, please don't swim at this time, or things along those lines. But regardless, there would still be like new railings and stuff at the top and removing the rope swing to discourage people from jumping at those heights, but rather just entering in at the ground level.
So are you asking us to state our pleasure tonight?
Yeah, that's one of the things that is sort of recommended, to make sure the towns actually will, actually wants this. Because it would be a bit awkward if I was to apply for the grants. They awarded the grant and then five days after receiving it, everyone in towns and the select board said, we didn't want this, why did you do it? So this is more of just saying, we give you our blessing, go forward.
Have a conversation about it. Does anybody have anything?
I think the quarry's more obtainable than any of them. When I was reading through it, so.
I like the idea of a bridge going across the river, too.
Oh, they're all good.
Yeah.
All three options are good.
I think more attain, obtainable right now would be the quarry.
Is there a time limit on the grant?
Yeah, September.
28th, September.
And I can do quarry this year and we can try the bridge next year.
That was my question. Can we, can we go back for these other options?
Yep. Yep, and as I say, it's a matter of just the point system. I think it would take away five, maybe 10 points, since we're doing it so recently. This is out of, I'd have to see how many points it was again. But it was, it's kind of miniscule.
Bill wanted to say something.
Yeah, it's important to mention that Max is also working on a comprehensive trail grant plan for the entire town. And that's something the rec committee will be involved in. So a lot of these grants, if we apply for them in the future, we'll be connecting them together in some manner shape or form. And that adds, you know, it just makes it more competitive application on it.
Now, it says here that we, as the town, has to come up with 23% of the, of the, of the cost. Have you figured out a plan for any one of these yet?
They do accept, they accept.
Right, I see, in con, yeah.
In con, yeah.
I understand that, but I mean, have you set up a schedule to, of what you're gonna need for labor or whatever?
And again, this is just a town thing. So if you want Quarry Hill, it's looking at Public Works, seeing how long it would take them to do.
Okay, yeah. So they would, so you're thinking ahead of, you'd probably have Public Works do the parking lots?
Public Works would do the parking lot, Conservation Commission and other volunteers. We want to expand the trail in Quarry Hill and things of that sort.
I didn't know if you'd looked at it yet in order, thought about that.
And the grant does change yearly. I believe last year was 20%, and they increased it by 3% this year. That's why it's a weird looking number this year.
You've noted a cost of between $10,000 and $20,000, is that?
Those were John Degel's estimates.
Was it?
Yes.
But you can get up to $50,000, correct?
Yes, so the grant, we would be going for, sort of the general one, that's $50,000. They also do what they call the large-scale project, which does $120,000. They usually go, I think, three a year. But those are geared towards more like gravel notch and these massive state parks, so. I can certainly look into that more next year.
Any other comments or observations?
I wonder if the audience has any thought.
Good idea. Do you have any thoughts about it?
I wish you could turn the speakers off, so I can hear.
I wish I could, too.
Sorry.
If you, if you were to put the bridge across the river, would you remove essentially a big part of the picnic area as such? And have you looked at any of the old pictures of the bridge across there?
I haven't looked at the old pictures. I did visit these sites when I was there. I wouldn't imagine removing part of the picnic areas, but.
You've got to have some place for the road to go.
It's a bike path.
Yes.
Oh, a bike path. So all you're gonna do is a bike bridge?
Yes, I.
A walking path.
A walking, a walking trail.
Well, a bike bridge, more like it. I, yeah, wouldn't be a car, any sort, going over. At least I hope not. I don't want to put, I don't want to put a sign there saying, no cars on the bike bridge.
Would this bridge be enclosed? I mean, with fencing all the way around? I mean, I think it would be like a liability if those, if kids get on that thing and say, it's going around. They'll fall into the river. That's my only concern.
Well, that would be handled in the design phase.
It would, and I asked, and I asked John about this one as well. And I think $200,000 was the number we put in there. That was his number based, and he said safety would also be a very top priority. And that's why he put that number in there. We wouldn't just be putting a plank on the thing.
No more rope bridge. Swing bridge, no swings, you know, just.
Which project, in your opinion, has more curb appeal?
I think Quarry Hill is certainly something that, as I said, long-term, I think there could be a benefit, especially if I can get, especially with the idea of a town-wide trail. I also think that it would sort of, I don't know what the word would be. Bring more attention to Quarry Hill, I suppose. As I say, I took, Marcus and I went and looked at Quarry Hill and the Ballfields just to get an idea of where we're at. And Quarry Hill, we agreed, yeah, there was almost no, there was no parking. There were two people who were already there when we got there. So I think just having the space would be good. That's just my two cents.
Another thing with the, with the Ballfields, too, is if we ever finally develop what we, what I've asked to have done of it, yeah, is we could open that aside up as well for trails.
And I think there's a question in the audience.
There's been a survey of the amount of people using it for a year at Quarry Hill.
There's, I have not done a survey of people.
I mean, has anyone in town done a survey of what amount of people use the facility, or the cost of the facility, to the townspeople?
That's my knowledge.
Elaine, sorry, Elaine wanted to say something.
I've been up to Quarry Hill a number of times because I volunteered when they have the kids fishing. And that's a pretty great resource that the town has.
It's a busy place.
It is a beautiful place, and it's beautiful.
Snowmobile trail runs up through there, I mean.
But the kids use the quarry for fishing.
Right, because it's kids-only fishing there. And it gets, I believe it gets stocked.
Yep, it does.
And every time I've gone up there, someone else has been there. I've never had the place to myself.
I have. But I took grandchildren with me and they just delight. They delight in it. They get up high and I get a little nervous.
Because the only other fishing, I mean, place to go swimming, like swimming hole, is Peter's Pond, I think. I don't, you know, fresh water that's easily accessible. It would be kind of sweet to have another place.
It's a wonderful, it's wonderful for children. You know, the fishing for kids and other activities they have there. It really is a, you're right, it's a real asset to our town. And it would be nice to highlight that.
Did you want to say something, Clint?
I'm just saying, it was just for swimming, 70s, you know, so. The history needs to repeat itself.
Not at your age.
Any, any other comments? I think we, I hear a consensus that maybe Quarry Hill is the way to go.
I'd go with Quarry Hill, so we can get a swimming hole up there, I guess. Yeah, I'd move that, if you need a motion.
Sure, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Quarry Hill it is.
Thank you, Katie.
All right, thank you.
So we've taken care of 11.7, I think. No, we haven't.
11.1.
11.1. Prox, but Diva Road.
This is a request from the Prox. They're in the process of selling their property. It was discovered that a water line runs from one side, across Diva Road, to the other side to a cottage. They'd like to be able to maintain that. In order to do that and make it all legal, they would need an easement from us and that they would guarantee that any work done, anytime that they have to dig the road up, it would be restored to its original condition. So that is what this is. This was drawn up by their attorney.
Yep.
It's pretty straightforward. We have them in other areas of town. But apparently, across the way, there is an issue with putting in any type of another well. That was their first option. But I guess within consultation with the well drilling company, it's not an option for that piece of property. And the cottage is a pre-existing cottage.
I'm Mrs. Prox.
Hello.
That currently, the line runs through the culvert, which was very convenient at the time of drilling the well. Because we were unsure whether it would be a good well, whether it'd be solved, like all the other wells are. And so, and it was in 2013. And at that point, it has been a good well. And we just kind of forgot that it was in the culvert. And, but we would need to do probably, I don't know if they're gonna let it stay in the culvert until the culvert has to be changed. I think it needs to be run under the road.
That's a John Degel, more of a John Degel question. And this was reviewed and recommended by John Degel that we approve it.
I would move approval.
I just want to make one point here.
I just want to make one point here. In the first paragraph, at the very, the penultimate line, it says, set easement being 10 feet wide, the center line. There's got to be some words missing there. It doesn't make sense the way it's written. And I would just, I would accept a motion saying, yeah, we approve it, substitute correction of that.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
I have a plan here, if anybody wanted to look at it.
You're good, you're good.
You're good.
We're good. 11-3.
Daryl helped me put it together.
Maybe we should look at it.
Oh, dear.
Daryl. Well, we taped it together.
All right, the next thing is to appoint assessor's agent, registrar of voters for fiscal year 2019, and we're recommending Daryl McKinney and Eileen Donlinger, respectively.
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Wait a minute.
Sorry, John?
I voted on it.
Yeah, we voted on it, but you can still say something.
I want to know the qualification of Eileen to become the assistant for one thing. And the next question is, is the assistant paid a wage?
You mean the registrar of voters?
The voters?
This is about the registrar of voters. We're appointing her registrar, we've appointed her registrar of voters.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yep. 11-4, terms for recreation committee members, and you're recommending?
Two, two of each.
Staggered terms.
Staggered terms, and I can draw them out of a hat?
Yep.
That's okay with you guys?
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I guess you actually have to appoint the recreation director. I thought we had done that, yeah.
That's number 11-5, yep. And that is to appoint the recreation director to the recreation committee.
I would move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, Marcus is now director of the recreation committee. We received a letter from the West Waldeboro Community Club, we received one from the Historical Society. It's about the community club down there, and I guess the question is, are we willing to take it back?
No.
And then?
No, 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 no.
Give it away again to the Historical Society, or simply transfer it?
Just that you have no problem with the transfer?
Yep.
Yeah, we don't have to take it back. That's just extra steps.
Okay, good. I just read that letter then.
Yeah, I would just give approval for them, for them to transfer it amongst those two organizations that we have no interest.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Seems like a good...
Now, there's one more thing in that letter about the lights at 80 Gray. This is a letter you wrote.
That's a different one.
All right, we'll put that at another meeting. Don't have to discuss it tonight. Okay, thank you. All right.
And we covered the recreational trails grant.
We did.
Right.
So approval of liquor license for Paint the Town, it's in the packet.
Please approve it, I'm going now.
You're going to buy some?
Is there a motion?
I bought some last year.
I know, I sat behind you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion about Paint the Town's liquor license? All in favor?
It's a great activity.
It is.
Brings lots of people into town, it's really fun.
If you haven't gone to Paint the Town, I have to tell you, I went for the first time last year, it was marvelous. I brought some amazing art. They don't let you take photos, though. It has to be actual painting, so.
Yes, it does.
It can't be a photograph, because otherwise I would have been like so excited, but I can't. Hawk my ways.
All right, and then the next thing on the agenda is the timeline, the election timeline?
This is purely for your edification, just letting you know when everything has to be on. The, no, no late...
Can we have some, the audience, listen to what Julie's saying, please? Thank you.
Just so you're aware, if there's anything that you want to put on the ballot, the date is September 7th. So if there's anything that you want on the November ballot, September 7th is your date that you have to let Eileen know by.
All right, this is just informational, really, we don't need a motion.
You don't need anything, that's purely informational.
Yep, all right. 11-10 is the gravel.
We received two bids, and the winning bid was FC Work &amp; Sun, and it was for, to screen the material, $2.64. The other bid was Hager, and that was $3.45.
Is there a motion?
FC Work &amp; Suns.
That was John's work.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further, any discussion about this one? I assume we bucked gravel from them before.
We, they screen it for us.
Screen it, okay.
Yeah, we don't buy gravel, they just come and screen.
They do it for us, yeah. All in favor?
That's a name.
It's up by Brooks.
And... I can't even read my own writing.
This is the, games of blank a letter of approval, and this is for Bino and Bingo, and this is for the VFW and the American Legion Post here in Waldeboro.
So moved. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Done.
It's the all-American way.
Sorry?
It's the all-American way.
Yep.
And now we just need to go into Philbrook, for Philbrook and for personnel.
Personnel, yeah.
Katie has those sites.
I need a motion to go into executive session. And would you please refer to both types, the Philbrook Fund and the personnel?
Make a motion to convene an executive...
John?
Oh, on the schedule, there was a thing about important assistant assessor.
I meant agent.
Assistant assessor.
Assessor's agent.
They are the assessors.
Okay, okay. Assistant, that was on the list.
Yeah, that's what we did then.
Assessor's agent.
I asked a question about that, and Eileen would...
Because Daryl's the assessor's agent.
Because Daryl's the assessor's agent.
That's why his name...
Respectively, that meant Daryl is the first one and Eileen's the second one, the registrar of voters.
My question was, we separate people. Liam is paid by, the manager, by Daryl. Her being appointed to that, is there a compensation?
To be registrar of voters, no.
I guess I'd rather.
No.
It's okay.